Okay, I call the Monday, October 22nd, 2018, Combined Northborough School, Southborough Regional School Committee, and the Northborough Superintendentcy Union of the Three Combined School Committee meeting to order. Could I have all the committees call their?
I'll call Southborough.
I'll call Northborough.
I'll call Region.
I mean, I'll call, I call Region session.
And our union too.
Okay. All right, having said that, the first item on the agenda is audience sharing. Do we have any audience sharing this evening? Okay, now we see none, we'll move on. The next item is the superintendent's search process. We've invited Art Betancourt and Carolyn Burke are here from Nezdeck, and Tracy Novick is here from MASC. And they'll do presentations on what they have to offer districts as far as assisting in the superintendent's search. And I'd like to welcome them to our districts. And thank you for coming. And we look forward to hearing the information you have to provide for us and to help guide us in our decision on where to go from here. So let's have Art and Carolyn, if you'd like to come up. What we'll do is each one will present, make their presentation, and then following the presentations, the committee will discuss the next steps. Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi.
And Carolyn, we have some things to hand out. Would that be appropriate?
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Which way are you going?
Thank you.
Who's here? Oh, we have enough, look at that.
And also, following each, you know, each presentation, we'll also ask questions of the presenters, I mean, so that they can move on and we can have our discussion later. Thank you. You can begin.
Well, we want to thank you for inviting us. It's a pleasure to be here. I had forgotten how close you are to my office. I'm down at the other end of Simmerano Drive, and I didn't even realize it. It's nice to see you all again, or to visit you again. My name is Art Betancourt. I'm the executive director of the New England School Development Council, Nezdeck. And I'm here with Dr. Carolyn Burke. And hopefully during the discussion, you'll get to know us a little better. We represent Nezdeck, which is a not-for-profit organization. It's been in existence for 72 years. As I said, located in Marlborough, Massachusetts. It began originally affiliated with the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Don't hold that against us, because we're no longer affiliated with Harvard. We're a standalone organization now. We have, we have no affiliations in any way. We're a completely standalone organization. We don't represent superintendents. We don't represent school committees. We don't represent teachers. We're strictly an objective consulting firm that comes in and helps districts all over New England. Our catchment area is New England, not just Massachusetts. We work in all of the New England states. And our mission is very simple, to assist schools and school districts in becoming high-performing organizations. And we do that really in four ways. First of all, we do professional development, which actually aims at school boards and school committees, right down to classroom teachers and office personnel. We do research and development. We've done a lot of research on what we call team governance, which is helping school committees and administrators and teachers develop goals and work to achieve goals for the benefit of the kids. We also do planning and management. We do demographic work, enrollment projections. You're an affiliate of Nezdeck, actually. And we do enrollment projections for you, that you probably use in terms of your distribution of students and your budgeting. We have a legal section, which focuses mostly on civil rights work, Title IX and other civil rights training, as well as investigations and that sort of thing. And the other item that we do is executive search, or executive leadership development. And that's what we're here to speak with you about. In my preliminary discussions with you, it appears that you, you may be open to how you move ahead in your search and maybe, probably, perhaps the best way for us to proceed would be for you to ask us questions that might guide you to the areas where we can be most helpful. Before doing that, however, I would say to you that our specialty is designing a search around your needs. We essentially, the very first thing we would do if we were engaged to do a search for you or to assist with your search would be to sit down with you and discuss what your needs are and how we would meet those needs. And then to determine a schedule for getting the things done that you think you need to get done in order to have a successful search. The other thing I would mention to you is we have a long tradition of community involvement in our search work. But not just in our search work, and in most of our other work as well. We have done literally thousands of focus groups and personal interviews and surveys, and it's sort of the bread and butter of what we do in our day-to-day work. So we're very comfortable in terms of doing community involvement and getting community input for your search. And I'll also just tell you that we have an outstanding networking capability. Because we're a New England-based firm, we can stretch, easily stretch into all of the New England states. And in fact, my board of directors is made up of superintendents of schools from each of the New England states. So we can reach into each of those states to look for talent. In addition to that, we're a member of a national networking group called the National School Development Council. I'm on the board of directors of the National Board. And we use the National Board, again, for recruiting nationwide. So virtually every search we do is a nationwide search. We don't really make a distinction. And if we were to be engaged for your work, obviously that recruiting network would be very, very important in terms of the overall applicant pool and reaching out to that applicant pool. Just in general, that's what we do. I think based upon where you are at the moment, or at least where I understand you are, perhaps we could be most helpful to you if we were to answer questions that you might have that could help guide us to the areas where you think you need assistance or where you need some clarification.
Okay. So I guess, I guess I would start off. So what is the, your approaches if the district has a strong internal candidate? What would be the recommendation on how to, like, a first step process?
That's not an unusual set of circumstances. And we believe that if you have a strong internal candidate, or you think you have a strong internal candidate, that you look at that candidate very carefully first, before you go out to the outside looking for a search. There are a lot of reasons for that. I mean, you obviously know the candidate. You have some idea of his or her capabilities and how that person fits in terms of the overall culture of your district. But in addition to that, if you go into a full-blown search, if you will, knowing that you have inside, internal candidates that will become known as you go through the process, that can really impact your applicant pool. And it can severely restrict the applicants that you might get. That's more so the case in Massachusetts than in the other New England states. Massachusetts, because of the open meeting law, gets to the point where your finalists become known publicly. And so if you're, if you have a situation where you have an internal candidate, I think people look at that very carefully before they opt to have their names, potentially have their names, released to the public and deal with the impact back home and all that that brings with it. So I think it's a very good idea to look at your candidate, internal candidate or candidates, very carefully first. And if you decide that they're the ones that, it's the one or she or he is the one that can do the best job, then I would suggest you look at that very carefully.
And how would that process, if we had an internal candidate, what would the process look like in terms of the services you could provide in order to make sure that there's buy-in among the community and so forth? What would be your recommendation in that regard?
Well, depending upon your community and the expectations of the community, I think perhaps some sort of community input process, whether that be by some sort of a survey instrument or whether it be by focus groups or by interviews, or all three, might fill the bill. That would give you at least a sense as to whether the candidate that you have in mind, the internal candidate or candidates that you have in mind, meet the expectations of the community. And also that these people are prepared to take on some of the challenges that you may have ahead as you, as you look to the future. So you might, you might want to do that. And other than that, and internal posting and going through a process internally where you review the candidate or candidate's qualifications and how they fit in terms of your need for the future, I think would be, would be part of it. Which we could also help with, too, in terms of that discussion, Carolyn.
No matter, no matter how you do it, internal candidate or an open search, you have to make a decision whether the person is the right fit for your community. And knowing that, you have to, you have to have an idea, what does your community need in order to see if the person matches that? So our community needs assessment process helps focus that, bring that, you know, we ask community members, what do you think you need in a superintendent? We ask the school committee members, what do you need in a superintendent? And through that process of generating that report, it helps focus people's thinking. And that way, when you're asking your interview questions, when you're assessing the fit, you have a profile to assess it. A common, commonly-developed profile to work against or to use as a lens. So that's one process. And as I said, when you post it internally, you may have more than one internal candidate. And it's making that decision about who, who's the best fit for your needs right now. And then the community needs assessment helps, I think, clarify that thinking. So that, that piece of it would be important. And I think just some, as, as Art said, as a search firm, we, we become your new best friends. We consult with you. You say, well, we want to do a posting. What would that look like? We'll help you develop it. We want to set up some focus groups. What would that look like? We'll help you do that. We'll run them if you want. We want to do an online survey. What would that look like? We'll help you do that. We can design that for you. So we'll give you whatever supports you need. Or you might say, we're good. We've got that part of it down. And we might say, you know, so we're there to say, these are some of the steps you need to think about to go through. And you might say, we're, we're good. We've got that. Or you might need some support here. So that's, that's how we do it.
Other committee questions? Joan?
Art, I'd like to welcome you back.
Nice to see you.
I think we go back a long time.
For a long time.
I think the, long time. I think, what was it, about 2005?
It was 2005. I went through the files, as a matter of fact. Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. And that was the last time when, again, in this same process of looking at different firms to see who could help us best in the superintendent. So that was the last time that we really looked outside to do an external search. But I'd like to thank you for all the work that you have done for us in the past.
You're very welcome.
And giving us always the best superintendents that we could have. In going into the same vein about an internal candidate, you ran the, what was the, some of the recent ones that you have run? Am I correct in thinking that you did the one in Hopkinton last year?
We did, we did Hopkinton, Wayland. We're currently doing Hingham.
We did Norwell.
Athan, Boxborough, Norwell, Sitewatt.
That had internally, are you asking?
Well, well, just to educate the committee on the ones that you've done, but also Hopkinton was, had an internal candidate, but also did ex, did external. And it was the internal candidate about the position.
Right, right. That's true. Hopkinton, they, they had an internal candidate that they knew about, and they, they still decided to do a full, pretty much a full-blown search. So there are, there are different ways of going about it.
And are you doing, do you have, what other ones are you currently involved in? Like, right now, at this stage?
We're currently doing Hingham. We're well along in Hingham. The deadline for applications is October 29th, I believe. So that one's well underway. And we're doing Randolph. Carolyn and I are not personally doing Randolph, but Nezdeck is doing Randolph. We just also are doing a search for a, I guess I'd call it a semi-private school down in Providence, Rhode Island, that we're doing as well. So we currently have three, three in process.
We have different search consultants. Art and I don't do all of the searches. It's different teams that work for me, so.
We have about 10 consultants that work for us that do searches.
So would you, would you, would it be another set of consultants that would work with us? Or would it be one of you, both of you?
Seeing, seeing as you're about four miles away from my office, I would, I would be involved in the search, as would Carolyn. No, I just thought it made sense, since I, I'm familiar with it, you know, familiar with the district and we've done work with you. That's not to minimize MASC and the fine work that they do as well. I mean, clearly, they, they have a lot of fine services that may meet your needs as well. But if we were to be engaged, Carolyn and I, Carolyn and I would be the search consultants, unless you, you felt otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Kelly?
Have you used, have you done searches for school districts similar to ours? How you've got one superintendent with essentially like three districts, kind of?
Yeah, like a Dover Sherwin, for example. Yeah, we did Dover Sherwin last year.
Okay.
Last year or the year before? Last year? I think it was last year. And Athan Boxborough is maybe similar. Groton Unstable may be similar. You're, you're, we were discussing this earlier. Your arrangement, your supervisor-union arrangement is somewhat unusual if you are still a supervisor-union. There aren't many of those around. But we've done, we've done several districts that are similar.
And we do, there's districts in New Hampshire. You know, we're not just a Massachusetts consulting firm. So we've done regional school districts.
So did the district contract with you in 2005? Was that Rosemary and? We had an, we had an internal candidate in Charles, but we went for an outside search and chose, so you were involved with that?
We did that search. Let's go ahead.
Okay.
And looking at your, your fees here, is this the same, no matter if you do just the, like, say we do the internal search and it's successful?
No, and thank you for bringing that up. The packet that I gave you includes a proposal for what might be called a standard search. I just thought you might like to see the flavor of what a full search might look like. But the fact of the matter is if we, if we did something other than that and just offered you an array of services based upon what you needed, those would all be priced out similar. And I think I gave you some general prices of the government. It would be much less expensive. For example, if you didn't do the full-blown search and didn't need all of the consulting time that is usually required, then the cost would be considerably less.
Do you have a ballpark for what that might be if it's just an internal?
It would depend on the, it would depend on the number of focus groups. Focus groups generally run about $365 apiece. And then if you wanted to do a survey, probably around $750. I mean, it's, it's not, I don't think it's a lot of money. Basically, we'd sit down and talk with you and say, based upon what you tell us, this is what we think you might look at and cost it out for you. It would be significantly less than, than a full-blown search.
And would, based on the process, if you had a screening committee, you know, if you had a number of internal candidates and you put together a full screening committee and everything, that's a different level than if you said, we have someone that we're very interested in, we just want to make sure that they're a match.
Okay, thanks.
So anything of this timeline that you have? If it's an internal candidate or candidates, the only things we would have to do, would, would you still do the school committee orientation?
Sure, if you'd like.
Would you, and then would you do the community needs assessment?
If you wished.
And I'm just looking here at the number of days going, you're starting like around, across May, day 25, you go to day 70. So what is the duration of a community needs assessment? And how far do you go into, what do you consider the community?
Well, the, the largest amount of time on this timeline is the, the time between the advertisements going out and the applications being due. That's like six or seven weeks that you wouldn't have to have in your search. The community needs assessment, if you're running focus groups, it's up to you. If you decide you want to put six focus groups in two days, you can do that. You can do a parent one in the morning, teachers one in the afternoon, administrators, so that you can do your focus groups. Usually, we're in a district, we're maybe in the district two or three days. We run an online survey for about a week. And then it takes about two weeks to really read the data and to, to develop the report, come back and meet with you. So probably it's about three and a half to four weeks for that community needs assessment process.
You could probably be, yeah, you could probably be in a position to make a decision about your internal candidate, I would say, within a month. If you, if you really, you know, put things together and tightened up your schedule and worked hard to get it done.
We'd work with you. If you, if you, if you want longer than that, it can take longer than that. If you really want a tight timeline, we'll work to that, too.
As Carolyn said, one of the, one of the big pieces of time is the six or seven weeks that you, you float your advertisement and do your recruiting. So if you're not, you're not doing advertising and outreach and recruiting, then that obviously condenses the amount of time significantly in terms of how you would, you know, how you'd get to the point where you've made decisions about your internal candidate or candidates.
Because I'm new to this process, if we do choose to interview an or some internal candidates, I guess why would we need a consulting firm to help us do that?
Good question. You might not?
You might not.
You might not. One of the things you will want to consider is the open meeting law and the way you proceed. Because if you proceed as a school committee, the, the open meeting law restricts the, the way in which you can, you can proceed. Most of what you will do will be in public session. Whereas if you create a screening committee to do preliminary interviews and then make a recommendation to the board or to the committee, that, the, the open meeting law kicks in in a different way. However, if you use a screening committee, the expectation is that the screening committee will put forth more than one candidate for consideration. So there are a lot of little details that you, you need to pay attention to. But you, you certainly could do it on your own if you chose to, provided you had some advice in terms of where the potholes are. And we can do that, too. I mean, if, if that's all you're looking for. We'd be happy to just sit on the sidelines and if you have a call, you have a question, take the call. And I would imagine, I don't want to speak for them, but MASC does the same thing, so.
So does the world of searching for a new superintendent go on a certain, like, annual kind of rhythm or schedule? Like, where are we in terms of, I'm just thinking about timing and having things lined up by the end of this?
Yes and no. I mean, there's, we do searches year-round. And it depends on, well, it does, it depends on the state. Because in some states, it's easier to do searches during the full year than others, because you, you can do them behind closed doors and you don't have to deal with the, sort of, the public exposure. But you're, you're probably in the sweet spot right about now. If you were, if you were to do a full search, right about now is when you'd want to be beginning. And you'd probably want to finish up the search sometime in February or March. So you don't want to go too far down the road in terms of your internal candidates and put yourself in, at a disadvantage. However, I would, I would tell you that we've done searches, we started searches in February and March. That have turned out just fine. And, and what you do is you just prepare people for, for the work that's required and you get it done in the time that you need to.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Have any of your clients needed to invoke the warranty provision in your agreement?
Not that I can recall in the last five years, anyway, no. I believe so. But I did, there, thank you for mentioning, there is a warranty.
Thank you.
So how many superintendent openings are there in Massachusetts right now?
Well, I don't know the exact number. It's probably 40.
Four zero.
It's, it's been, it's been like 40 or 50 a year forever. So it wouldn't surprise me. And then not all, we know that there are some that haven't even broken yet. So the number is, is a variable number. But there are quite a few. But the problem is not just Massachusetts. The problem is all over New England. You've got, you've got superintendencies opening up in all of the New England states. Connecticut is very active right now. As is, we'll be talking to a board up in New Hampshire as well. So there are a number of openings. And maybe to get to the next part of your question, the applicant pool is thin. You have to work hard to find folks that can really be a good fit. They're out there. But you have to work hard and you have to recruit hard. And you really have to, to, to reach out to find people that, that can fill the bill.
Well, I actually have two follow-ups. So the first one was, do you have a feeling for how many of those openings are in regional districts?
I don't, at the moment. I couldn't give you a number on that. I would be just guessing at the moment.
Well, you gave a certain, a certain examples, but that's fine. And also, and lastly, do you have a feel for of those openings? How many of them typically have in, strong internal candidates?
Oh, lots. It's not unusual at all.
Is it the majority?
I might say that. I mean, it's not at all unusual to have internal candidates. And it's not unusual to have a discussion like we're having with you this evening about how you go about handling them. And some, some districts will, will do their internal search first, and other districts decide, no, we're just going to open it up to everybody and let the chips fall where they may. So, but the internal candidates are, are very common.
And sometimes it's the candidate, him or herself, who belongs to a network of professional organizations, who at that network says, by the way, my district is open and I'm, I'm in it. Has a chilling effect on applications.
Yeah, I think that's, it's important to know that even though you folks may not be broadcasting that there's an internal candidate, that doesn't mean that it will stay that way, because that's just you. There's nothing that prohibits other people from letting, letting it be known that there's an internal candidate in a search. And it usually gets out. I mean, and you, you would expect it to. And so you, you deal with it. And as I said, you know, school boards and school committees do it differently.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Joan?
Just a comment. Lauren, just to, through the chair, tomorrow, is that the last two superintendent searches, we did do it internally among ourselves. We had interim superintendent Charles Cabran, who became interim because of the passing of Rosemary Joseph suddenly. So he was interim superintendent of law. And then we had a process just among ourselves that we had done of interviewing. And then when Charles was ready to retire, Christine was our assistant superintendent. And with interim candidate, we decided to do it among ourselves. And it was successful both times.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no more questions, if you have any other questions for?
Well, I just want to thank you for inviting us. It's, it's a tough decision to, to decide how you're going to move ahead with a superintendency. And if there are other, if there are questions you have that we might be able to answer, feel free to call. And I'd also say that regardless of who you choose to help you, we, we hope you're successful in your search. It's important, we want every, every search to be a, a good search and to, to have a good outcome. So whether it's us or another firm, we wish you well in however you choose to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have welcomed Tracy Novick to our discussion. She's from Mass Association of School Committees. Some of you may have met her and know her well. So thank you, Tracy, for coming. Beautiful for your presentation.
I have these too as well.
Thank you.
A new teacher here? How's your dad?
Thank you.
Thank you Tracy.
Thank you. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Tracy Novak. Several of you may know my colleague Dorothy Presser, who's the field director for this area. But I've met several even several other contacts, including a couple of you. I'm actually back because I was an English teacher here before I had children and before I was on the Lister School Committee. So I was here in time to give input for the new building, but not to teach in it. So it's nice to actually get to come and admire it. So it's good to be here with you. The first thing that I like to emphasize when I talk to committees that are facing this decision is for you to know that we're your professional association. That's what we're here for. That's what we do. That's all we do. And that's true regardless of how you decide to move forward after tonight. So you have a, a big decision in front of you, as has already been somewhat laid out. There's a couple of different directions that you can go in at this point. And your association with MASC is already something that you have as you roll forward, whether you decide to roll forward with a formal search or not. So what I've given you this evening inside the packet is, on the right-hand side, is the guide that we give all school committees that are facing a superintendent decision. And that is, that information is something that we share with our members anytime that they are having to make this decision. And what it lays out is the options that are in front of you and the processes that you'll have available to you as you go forward. And I say processes because really the thing that's most important for you to understand, particularly for those of you who haven't done this before, is that school committees in Massachusetts have really a broad discretion when it comes to hiring superintendents. I think that for many ca, in many cases, there's a perception that a particular kind of process has to be followed or particular things have to happen. And really in Massachusetts, you have to follow the open meeting law and you need to hire somebody who can actually be certified as a superintendent. And really that's it. So a committee can simply move to hire someone internally. They don't have to go through any particular kind of process. In our experience, somewhere between a half and a third of committees every year makes the decision to hire an internal candidate. They do that in various ways. Some of them simply have someone who's next in the pipeline or who they all have had a good deal of familiarity with, who there's a broad degree of comfort with in the community. And they simply feel that they can move forward. Some of them choose to, and this is something that I've been involved with in the past, have the candidate vetted by MASC. That's something that we will do for you because you are members without a charge. That usually involves us having some conversations with the school committee ahead of time, taking a look at what your goals are for the community, committee, the districts, and using that as a basis for a conversation, as well as doing our own research on the candidate and then reporting out either to your chairs or to the full group of committees on what it is that we've discovered. The other thing that is available to you is that the committee itself can do the search. That usually means that you've got one or more people who feel that they can give the time to it. And you usually need some pretty strong staffing internal to the district in order to do that. But that's also something that is a possibility. If that is something that you are interested in, something that again is just part of you being members of MASC, is that we do do technical support for the committees that are doing that. That means that your posting goes on our website, goes on MAS's website. We're available by phone as you're going through the process of narrowing down your questions, trying to make decisions around timeline and processes. So that's actually something else that's available to you. And again, those are just things that you have already as part of being members of MASC. If you decide to move forward with doing a full search, MASC charges ninety-five hundred dollars to do it. Did not print out a contract for you because part of what I want to impress upon you is that you don't actually have to do that. But that is something that is a possibility for you. If you do that, we are the people who then staff all of the sessions. Generally speaking, what happens, and again, this is at the committee's discretion, but generally what happens is the committee appoints a search committee with a broad array of representation from the communities, from the schools, students, teachers, municipal officials, parents and so forth. Those take, that takes place at the same time that we would be running input sessions, both internal to the district and within the community. That then informs your posting. And what I've given you is a couple of examples of what MASC produces. Those go up on our website. I tried to give you ones that were somewhat similar in terms of districts, give you regional school districts. Massa Comet is actually one of the searches we're doing right now. And those are up for a bit. The applications come back to us and we then go through the process with the search committee, which has done an executive session of them choosing which candidates they want to interview. Interviews are done in executive session and then they pass the finalists along to the full committee. Your interviews have to be done in public session. Your decision-making needs to be done in public session according to the open meeting law. We are here for those interviews as well and for your decision around the finalists. And the other thing usually that we're part of is if you're having finalists, making sure that you have a contact with the other districts for visitations back and forth. So those are your three choices really that are in front of you at this point. And you should know that the notion of internal candidates are not at all foreign to Massachusetts. The idea of moving forward without there being a full search, again, not at all foreign to Massachusetts. The one caution that we generally like to give committees is that if you're going to hire an internal candidate, hire your internal candidate. Don't pretend you're doing a search and then hire an internal candidate. There are occasionally committees that, that do that. And that tends to be the one thing that people get into trouble with. We sometimes hear, is it okay to do it without actually having a full process and a full search? And generally if the committee feels confident and moves forward in a direction confidently and in a unified way, the communities will go with them. But saying one thing and doing another is something that actually will tend to get committees into trouble. So that would be the one thing that I would caution you against. And I think that's all I have to say, but I'm happy to take any questions you have. Oh, the other thing that's available for you that you'll see is my business card is behind Dorothy Presser's deputy business card. You have both of our contact information. And again, that's something you should have anyway because we're people you can call.
I don't have, I don't have business card, but if you could just grab one?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I'll actually give you about here.
Thank you Tracy.
You're welcome.
Same question Tracy, as I had for our, is do you do the focus groups?
Yes.
You mentioned, you know, by posting on the website that if we have an internal candidate, would you also do the focus groups?
If we're going to staff focus groups, we would need to have a negotiation with the district about whether or not we charge you for some staff time. I ran a similar kind of process in Quavon last year where we charged them. Essentially what we did was we created, created a district profile and a leadership profile for them and then vetted their internal candidate. That's somewhat unusual. We haven't done that a lot of places. And we charged Quavon a thousand dollars for that. And I did do all of the focus groups. I did one with students. I did three with, four with teachers, two in towns and, and then did all the internal central administration stuff.
Okay. And when you do the focus, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair?
Yep.
When you say two in towns, are you, because I mean, Quavon is made up of several towns.
Yes.
So did you go to each of the towns?
We did not go to each of the towns. We went to, I did New Salem, we did Bear. I think we did three actually. We did Berry, we did New Salem. I want to say I did a third one as well. Yep.
Is it an online focus?
We did both. So we had a survey that was out in the field. We also realized we were dealing with a district where technical levels are, are varied. New Salem still doesn't have broadband. So we made sure that the survey was also available in paper form around the town. And then, no, we did in-person, in-person focus groups. So I actually was in New Salem Town Hall. We had some members of the select board there. We had a good number of parents there and that sort of thing. And then we did the same thing at Quavon.
Can you give an example of some of the questions that you ask the focus group? Like the material that we get back from their responses, what are some of the questions that you ask them or online?
I generally, we generally like to start with them talking about the district. So what are the things that are working really well that you really appreciate about the district? That you would want to make sure that any candidate coming in understood, appreciated and supported about the district? And then likewise, what things are in the district need work? What are the things that you see as being the things that the district still is struggling with or that are maybe upcoming issues that the district will be dealing with? Then we talk about leadership. What are the qualities they're looking for in a leader? What do they most appreciate in a leader? And really try to create first of all, a district profile from the perspective of the different stakeholders and then also a leadership profile from the perspective of the different stakeholders.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And with the online surveys, I guess what's, what type of response rate do you get from that? Is it typically strong? Is it minimal?
Um, it's interesting. Well, the first thing that it always depends on is how well the district does in publicizing it.
And assuming you have technology like broadband that?
Yes, yes. So yes, so we, that was actually, I had a lot, several long conversations with the superintendent's office in Quavon about like where did it need to be in paper form? And were we making sure we were covering the senior centers and that kind of thing? Yeah, so we always see a boost. For example, I can always see when a district pushes it out again because you'll see the numbers kick up. But yeah, so it, it, that one really, really varies by district. There, the districts where there's a high level of comfort with online surveys and those kinds of things, we'll see hundreds of responses. I would say that there are prob, I mean, obviously we also do smaller districts. I mean, we, one of the searches we did last year was a Cushnet, which I think is the smallest, smallest district in the state. You're not going to see as many there. But if, if it gets well blanketed, if the schools are making sure the parents know, if the teachers are being encouraged to take it, if there are alumni networks that people tap into, those kinds of things, we generally will see a good response rate for that. In-person sessions tend to be a little bit less, but I know I'm talking to people who know how night meetings work and it's always a challenge to get people to night meetings.
The vetting process, can you, do you talk to co-employees? Do you talk to faculty employees? Do you talk to like early parts of vetting process generally?
The first thing that I will say is that we have really strong internal networks just because of who we are, professional candidate association. Most of the districts in this, I mean, just about every district in the state is a member of MASC. We know school committees, we know administrations. We know who has been where and who has worked with whom and all of those kinds of things. So in any case where there's candidates that have had any experience external to the district, in many cases we have people that we can easily contact and say, what's the experience been like? The first thing that, that generally we as a staff do whenever there's a list of applicants that come in is we sit down together and say, okay, what do we know? And so we have a similar kind of conversation there. We try not to, for internal vetting, if we're not doing focus groups. We're doing focus groups to become, it's a different conversation. If we're internal vetting without focus groups, we try not to do too much sort of internal prying to the district because honestly, everybody's already a little like fraught and on edge during those times anyway. We'll have those conversations if we have people who we have a relationship with already.
Paul?
If you do a focus group, how do you populate that? Is it people invited or is it just put out for everyone?
Um, it, so it depends on the focus group. So they, if you're doing, we usually do it with all the faculty. So I'll do one with the teacher, the high school teachers, one with, you know, there are different elementary school teachers and those sorts of things. If I'm talking to the, generally we like to meet with the principals, we'll meet with them right around a table. For the public ones, yes, we do a similar kind of thing in honestly, in terms of we, what we would do with the survey. So we would ask the schools to make sure that they do the same kind of blast they do about any meeting that they're having. We make sure that it gets in all the local papers. We encourage everybody who has access to social media to make sure that it gets blasted out. I keep getting tagged in on all of students' searches right now because one of those is what's happening. But all of, essentially we ask that all, we make sure that all resources get covered one way or the other that districts use to reach people.
What kind of response on a, on a public side have you been getting?
That really varies. So I spent a couple of very cold nights in, in New Salem and it got dark early. There also are ones though where, where either there has not been a search for a long time and people are looking for a change, or where people are more used to kind of coming out for those. So I have been at sessions that have been twenty or thirty people. I've been at sessions that are single digits. I offhand can't recall any that went too, too, too much higher than into the twenties.
Thank you.
What is the timeline for so versus, you know, having focus groups or, or focus group and survey or just survey? How would that, how would those scenarios affect the timelines?
Um, so the, if you're doing focus groups, you want to make sure that you, well, first of all, you need to, you have to work with the district's schedule around faculty. So if you have faculty meetings that only are once a month or whatever, in many cases, that's what we're taking over. So that's kind of the first question. Outside of that, you want to give a couple of weeks notice. I try to give at least a week or maybe two if I can for public ones with multiple reminders. Surveys, we like to have in the field at least two weeks. I have had ones that have been out as much of a month, as a month, although that one, as I recall that one, it dealt with a holiday break. So yeah, I would, we generally try to make sure that our surveys are out for, for multiple weeks. Focus groups partly depends on other people's schedules.
And then once the survey is out and then back, what's the turnaround time on dissemin, you know, gathering the data, disseminating the information?
That we can usually do pretty quickly. Um, we, I would say within a couple of days.
Okay.
Yep. Not longer than a week.
So like two to three weeks, the whole process would could be finished or two to four if we have no Thanksgiving?
I would say that if given a month, allowing for holidays, but yes.
Yeah, because we're coming on Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Jesslyn?
So same question. How many su, open, open superintendencies are, or superintendent, superintendent openings are there right now in Massachusetts?
Right now, I believe there are about ten, but not everybody has let school committees know that they're leaving yet. We're early, so.
Do you know how many of them are regional?
How many of them are regional? Massa Comet is out right now. Dudley Charlton is a search that I'm doing, will be done Wednesday. Those are the two that I know of right now, although one, two, I think there's probably two more that we're not doing that I know of so far.
Okay. And in your experience, how many searches are typically involve a strong internal candidate?
Uh, somewhere between a third and a half. I would say that we've seen, I think we saw a good number of them last year go that way.
So clarification question. You're talking about doing the interviews and then decision-making process in open meeting versus executive session. What was that distinction?
The search under Mass General Law, the search committee, which is appointed by the school committee, gets to meet an executive session for their interviews for that initial vetting. Once that has taken place, the finalists have to be interviewed in open session by your committee. And your decision has to be made in open session. So the school committee doesn't actually have the power to do it, do this, any part of this in executive session. But if you appoint a search committee, the first round essentially can be done in executive session.
Now, if you had, if you had a terminal candidate, there wouldn't be a need to have a search committee or you would just have the vetting, like either we vet our, the, the focus group, inter- or you would just have the vetting, like either we vet our, um, the, either focus group, internal surveys or both, just kind of as a preliminary phase. And then if you chose to have a vetting process done by MASC, say there's more than one or something, um, um, that might help inform, um, decisions. So, but the, the search committee would be really in place, you know, if there wasn't an...
If you decide to do a full, full public, whole process, yes, right. Yeah, if you're vetting internal, um, that generally isn't done with a, it generally is done with a search committee, yeah. And I should say that what you then get from us, if we do vetting, um, is we don't like make a recommendation one way or the other. What we do is we say, here are the strengths of this candidate, um, here are the things that we see that that person might need some support with, um, so that you're making an informed decision about the, the person as a potential leader of the district.
Any other questions?
Well, um, any, do you have any final?
No, just, um, the only thing I would say is do hang on to our business cards because the reason that we are here is to take your phone calls. Um, and as you come across things either in this, but in the other things that you do, um, that is why we are here. So, um, you should feel free to call us, for any of you to call us at any time.
Okay, so, um, can do any discussion on what is people's thoughts?
Obviously, the challenge with all of this is do we have that strong internal candidate? Do you have anything to report? Does anyone have anything to report on that front?
We do have a strong internal candidate. Um, I, I spoke to Greg and he's interested, so.
So if that's the case, where do we go from here?
Well?
Well, basically, the idea of having the two, um, um, searches to firms come out, or MASC as our representative, which are all supervisory services, and NASDAQ is to sort of give people, um, the idea of what, what it would look like, um, in the different scenarios. If you had an internal search, what's our options? You know, what, um, level of involvement do we as a school committee want, want to do? Do we want to have some assistance with the, um, either focus groups or surveys or both? What do we want to do? Do we want to do both? Do we want to do surveys? Um, and do we have, one of the things about if you do something ourselves, like in the past, you know, do we have the bandwidth and the expertise to do, you know, the proper survey questions? And doing all that, um, ourselves? Um, I myself am not, you know, a very, I'm not, have no experience in doing, um, s- social science type of questions, make sure they're valid. Um, so, you know, um, it all depends on what, you know, we have to offer and what we think you need for support, um, in doing this process. Joan?
Um, I think either way that we go, I think it's very important that we do focus groups and we do surveys. Um, I know, I believe under Christine's leadership, we did the strategic plan. We had an outside firm that came in just for that reason that you're saying, Lynn, to help with the surveys and the focus groups. I think it has to be transparent. I think that it helps us in all the time because people do get to be heard. You know, we did under Christine's leadership, I know there were even focus groups in here. And when I, and that was for the strategic plan. And, you know, you may have parents at a lower level and if by the time we get done and they come in, they're up into fifth grade or something like that. And I think it, it's for the transparency and just to listen to our constituents. We do it all the time. We have, you know, an open policy, we have open sharing. We've even, in other meetings, we've even divided the, the sharing proportion and said, let's do it, I, it was at the Northborough level. Um, let's do it at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting, we had two. And we just, we changed it because we wanted to hear from the constituents. And I think when we do that and we're good listeners, that helps us. And I think that in turn will help that candidate, whoever he or she might be, okay? Is that then they can start on a, on a good foot with nobody saying, okay, they didn't listen to me. They had the opportunity and if they don't do the survey, if they don't do, show up for a focus group, we gave them the mechanism. So I know Lynn, going to your things, I think Christine could probably verify that, but I think you did have an outside firm that came in and did the focus groups. And then with, with your group, then you did compose the, uh, strategic plan, the one that we currently have.
I can confirm three things. Mars did the outside surveys for the strategic plan. Even as an internal candidate, there were focus groups and there was a survey from my, prior to my appointment. And your point is well made. It's just confirmation for the internal candidate and information as they move forward with their leadership. But also it provides an opportunity for input from the community. So those three things were, uh, a focus group and to their point, not well attended. Their point being NASDAQ and MASC, I think they were the, the same sort of thought about the focus group. So they were held, um, and surveys were done, uh, even, you know, in my case. And it provided some guidance. Dan?
I'll agree with Joan. I think it's a great idea. Um, I think the main focus group is the individuals that will be, that are sitting at the table and that'll be voting on this, but we have to hear from the community and make that, uh, you know, that opportunity available. Surveys are great, focus groups are great. It may be a very limited pool that actually come out, may be a very limited pool that actually respond to a survey. So, you know, the overall responsibility, I think, for this decision relies on, on the board members, you know, the committee members and, um, but I agree, I think it's important that, uh, the opportunity be there for, um, any individuals in the public that want to come forward and participate in that, um, either a survey or a focus group. Bottom line is, I think the main focus group is going to be those that know the individual the best. And my guess is that'll be the people, predominantly the people here on the table.
Kathleen? So, um, I dug into old minutes and, uh, the last time we went through this, which, um, I think we can all agree turned out pretty well based on our superintendent's evaluations. Uh, and it says, after a good deal of discussion, the school committee members, and this is dated December 11th, 2013. After a good deal of discussion, the school committee members present decided to recommend to the entire committees that the no-cost services of MASC be utilized to, one, formulate a survey to be sent to the community members, and two, organize preliminary focus groups to obtain community members' needs and interests centering around the position of superintendent of the three districts, Northborough, Southborough and Northborough, Southborough Regional. Uh, tentative dates, blah, 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 which are different because the timeline was different. But, um, we, uh, I guess, uh, were presented with the responses to all that, uh, in the January combined meeting. So, um, that's what we did last time. Worked out pretty well. I think MASC, you know, did a pretty good job. I, uh, and I, I think that my memory is, um, really about the strategic plan focus groups that I was involved in. And I went to them all because I was on strategic planning. And I will tell you that in Southborough, two people showed up. Northborough, nobody. And in Regional, we had like 10, but that's because the Regional focus group, they got smart and they actually did it at the time of an APTO meeting. So it was really all APTO people that were there, which was fine. I mean, get people there as, as, you know, whatever way you can. Um, but anyhow, so, uh, that being said, we should, uh, talk about whoever makes that decision, talk about strategies for, um, increasing the participation of those focus groups. Kathleen?
I concur with Joan's, um, sensibilities and values that she purported in the transparency and being of service to the community as well as to, uh, the superintendent's office. And I wonder perchance if the internal candidate went through, do the same, um, opportunities for consultancy occur for an assistant? Because it would seem like that timing would be particular and, um, in a new superintendent getting a good start with the support, um, in office. So I'm, I'm just curious about that.
So what's the process for like? Can only speak to past practice? And we've done this several times. Um, and the same practice was employed when we hired Greg as assistant superintendent. And that was, and I would suggest that turned out equally well. Um, and that was an internal search, uh, that's comprised of, um, school committee members, one from each school, uh, district, um, parents, we had, um, teachers and administration on that. And that has worked out incredibly well. I don't believe, I can't speak for all the years, but I don't think that a search committee has ever been in place, um, from Mars or from an outside organization for the assistant superintendency. Um, and that generally is, um, probably the most important position in place for a superintendent. So the process that we've used in the past, which certainly doesn't mean it has to be going forward, has really worked out incredibly well for the district. Um, and the key position, of course, is to get the superintendent in, in place. Um, we may as well have internal candidates for that position.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Are there, is it just one candidate or? Or now is it just Greg or are there other?
Well, I think the idea would be to post it internally, so.
It has been posted?
It has not, no, but that's what we have to decide tonight, I guess, is one of the things. But I think the procedure is to post it internally, right?
It's generally 10 days internally, an internal posting. And that brings out known and unknown. Yeah, others would be able to apply.
Um, so a timeline question. Um, would this posting happen before or after the focus groups? The internal posting?
Or concurrently or?
For matters.
Doesn't seem contingent.
I thought it would be nice to have it after, personally. I, I was going to...
I mean, the, I think, um, they said something about how the online surveys and the focus groups kind of help maybe inform the posting at all? Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's the question I was going to ask. Because to me is, as we're talking now, it seems that we have to look at the needs of our district. I mean, we have several things here that we could be doing and this is the most important one. But I think that, um, you know, seeing what the needs are, seeing what the staff, we hear from a lot of staff in their presentations. But, you know, hearing from the staff, hearing from parents, what they're seeing, the parent groups, you know, what a lot of them, the issues are. But I think, and then saying, okay, now what would the decision be where we want to go? And can I just, th- this is nothing for discussion tonight, but I think just to point, put back in your minds, is that at this juncture, we need to also look at the structure of this central office. And I think while we have Christine here with her wisdom and knowledge, is, we've heard at different times from reports, we're very lean, we should have more people. And maybe we look at, we had an outside firm that came in when we were still in the old building, at old ice, of this building and made a report and said we were very lean. We talked about it in a meeting that we were very, we need more support in there. And we're early in the budget season, we still have our superintendent with us. And just to put in the back of your minds, maybe that's something that we run parallel to this to see what do we need and using the guidance of our superintendent with that. That's just something, that's just in the back of mind. That's just, while we're doing that, that's what I've been thinking about. What is the structure? Because right now, we don't have a permanent business director, right? And, you know, how do we want to do it? Because we always, in the past, when you would have it, you'd say, hey, you have a assistant, you have a superintendent. What are their strengths? Is it business or is it curriculum and instruction? So if you have a superintendent, a candidate who is strong in, because you talked about assistant superintendent. If you have one who's strong in curriculum instruction, then you look for one who's going to be strong in business, just to complement it. But we've only relied on two people in that, at that office, at the highest levels. So do we look, as we decided going out in June, do we look at, you know, a higher position for the business and director? So that's just something that we can look at when we're, we're at this junction right now. And we do have our superintendent in office to help us with that and give us our vision.
So, ju- just not to jump ahead, but that is already under consideration because Southborough's budgets due in two weeks, about three weeks. Um, so our preliminary budget will be presented, I think, to Southborough in November. And so those kind of considerations have to already be in play. And, um, this is an ongoing conversation at central office and it has been for three or so years. And so the intent is to make a proposal to the school committee because it is, it does need to be funded in order to be implemented. And, um, with an accelerated timeline and an awareness of, um, already what the percent of increase is on the budgets based on staffing increases, it's going to be a challenging budget season. So, um, we've, we've crunched those numbers and we do have some, um, I do have some recommendations that would be, um, um, movement within the internal structure and plan to present that. And, um, worked on that with the administrative team that's already in place, anticipating a new superintendent and making sure that that new person has additional support, whoever that might be.
Thank you for that insight.
Katora?
Um, I just want to circle back to the actual, what we're doing for the actual superintendent position. Um, I'm wondering if it would be possible to post internally while the focus groups are going? Because I don't know, i- i- maybe we need to go back and review the job description and make sure the job description is tight and maybe leave it, um, flexible where, where the, the results of the focus group might really make a substantive difference. Um, you know, su- supervision of assistant superintendent or superintendents, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but I'm concerned about losing too much time waiting for the focus groups to be done. I, I feel like it's the kind of thing that could just drag on and something gets rescheduled and we just kind of, and I, I also, um, would expect that most internal candidates would have a fairly good sense of what the district is like already. So the results, you know, might be specific in some ways, but the general job is going to be the same regardless of, of what the focus groups show, so, or the surveys, so.
Paul?
I agree with that and, um, it seems like the decision before us, the most immediate decision is whether we hire either NSD and NASDAQ or MASC or, or try to go along, which I would not want to do. So, I mean, to me, I, I think they both sounded good. Uh, we've used MASC in the past successfully. My inclination would be to do that again, at least for this, uh, internal part. If we do, if that for some reason doesn't succeed and we have to go, you know, outside, we can take another look at NASDAQ if we want. So I'd like to make a motion that we hire MASC to help us with the superintendent search.
I'll second that.
Motioning for?
That was for Southborough and the Union and Region.
Region. Okay, so Paul, Paul, does it? By, um, Dan Kalinda for the Region. Uh, and you can, any other motions by Northborough or seconds for Southborough and Region?
I can, I'll second for Southborough.
Second for Southborough.
I'll second for the Union.
Okay, and, and motion for Northborough?
Motion for Northborough.
Motion for Northborough, second for Northborough?
Second for Northborough.
Okay, so, let me repeat it. So motion by Paul for, uh, Region, um, Union and Southborough. And motion by, um, Kelly for Northborough. And, um, seconded by Dan for Region, um, by Katora for Southborough, by Joan for Union and, um, did I missing someone?
Susan.
Susan for?
For North.
For Northborough, okay.
Very good.
And this is to hire on a full scale?
Just the survey part for MASC.
Survey, focus groups.
Just the survey.
Survey, focus groups, right, Paul?
Yeah, to help with the internal search.
Okay. Any discussion? Keith?
Good question. So that's not one of our included services and what was the cost for this portion?
It was like a thousand, I think, for surveys and, yeah.
I think the survey is included.
Yeah.
Is that right, Tracy?
Uh, right, so we, we would vet, um, as, at your charge.
She needs a micro, you just need a microphone? If you would.
This for the TV, for the, uh, cable?
Yeah, it's.
Um, right, so for, um, simply vetting, that's something that we do as a matter of course that we would charge for. Um, it's really honestly a question of... It's really honestly a question of start time, once we start getting into, really honestly, less the surveys and more the focus groups. So it's really the focus groups, that's the charge. I would want to go, we've only done, we did that with Quabham last year, that was an unusual circumstance. So I'd want to double check that with our executive director to make sure that we were on, that we were on track. But it wouldn't, we would obviously not be charging you the full amount. And last year, what we charged Quabham was a thousand dollars for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tracy, and that vetting would include central office, principals, staff?
If we do focus groups, we, yes, we generally like to, we make sure that we have input from the faculty. So we generally try to make sure that we've gotten to the elementary schools, that we've done the middle schools, we've done the high school. We meet with the central administration, people who work, particularly because it's an internal candidate, you want to talk to people who work most closely with the person already. We, if we can, we like to meet with the school secretaries, because they have a very good angle in what's going on in the district. And generally, I've tried to meet also with students, if that's possible, and then the external sessions. I think that's everything. But generally, the notion is to try to make sure we get as many stakeholder voices in as possible.
Thank you.
Sure.
Don't go too far.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, oh, Kelly.
Would they help re, or check over the job descriptions that I got, or does that happen before or after this? Like, do they do that?
For the posting, help with the posting?
Posting, yeah, for the internal posting.
Maybe on their staff.
Yeah, I wanted to say, yeah. You need the exercise. Everyone needs the exercise.
I do need the exercise.
Need, need your steps, right?
I didn't get outside.
We're helping you get all your steps.
The, so the, the, the short answer is honestly, that's up to the committee, right? You can do it either way. Generally, what we try to do, and I hear the concern around times, because I know that it is particularly concerning to hear that, generally, this time of year, we run, we end up being okay. It's really when we're running focus groups in February and we start to, like, run into snowstorms or that kind of thing. Last year, I kept running into town meeting nights, that it starts to become a problem. So I would think, I mean, bluntly, MASCE loses a week in November because of the annual conference with the superintendents. You will get a little out of us that week. But I would think that we could probably be doing focus groups and surveys for most of November, that we could be talking, that we could be having conversations with you. I mean, I would hope that before your holiday break, that you'd have what you needed from us. That would, and that's, I would, I'm trying to actually make sure that there's extra time in that, as I'm thinking about the calendar. That would, that would be what I would think. In terms of the timeline of posting and focus groups, that's honestly up to the committee. Generally, our recommendation is to do the focus groups first, to do the survey first, so that that's then informing, something of the posting certainly, but also then the decision that you're making. Because certainly, it's up to the committee, and you're intended to be here to represent your communities, but you also know that there's things that you don't know. So that's really what the focus groups are intended to flesh out. And also, because you're talking about an internal candidate, some of what you're going to get in there is also potentially going to be reflective of the internal candidates, candidates or candidates. So that is at the discretion of the committee. If it were me, I would do the focus groups first and then have that inform the posting so that the posting had some of that reflected in it. You certainly can roll forward either way, though.
So if I'm looking at the timeline, if we were, you know, getting all the information and done from you before the holiday break, it seems like we could do a posting, say, January 2nd, and we'd close it around January 15th. And I think January has a five week, an extra week for our school committee meetings, correct? So we could have another combined meeting, January 23rd, for the interview process. So if we did do it, didn't do it concurrently with each other and wanted to do it step by step, it seems like we'd still have a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, and I think that there's a lot of slush in there. I honestly, when I say December, I was thinking you probably could be making a decision by then.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, you also have a lot to juggle when you're all getting together. So that scheduling is something you have to consider as well.
Okay. Yeah, so we could, we could have...
You could try to have it wrapped up by the end of the year. If you decided to roll forward with internal candidate, of course. If at that point, you decided that instead you were doing outside search, then that's fine. And I do want to reassure you that, you know, much as, as my colleague from Nezdek said, while it is better to be in the fall batch of putting postings out there, there are plenty of successful searches that take place after the first of the year. So you haven't, you know, you haven't missed out on things by that point. And something to keep in mind, if you, if you end up rolling forward with exterior searches, is that Northborough, Southborough is certainly one of those districts that there are people who have their eye on, right? That there are, there are people who won't apply just anywhere that they're looking for particular districts, so.
Okay, so, Joan.
When you start doing the focus groups, do you also look at what makes our district unique? Because, like even on the agenda, we have a start time study group. So we've had some, a group of parents that have that initiative. There's initiatives in Northborough, about camp groups that are very strong. Do you go to those, especially to, do you look at the groups and say, okay, if I go to this, such as a study group, I know I'm going to hit a certain populace. If I go to this one group in Northborough, if I go to this one group in Southborough, besides doing just the whole general public?
We generally don't.
You don't?
We would encourage that those groups be informed of the general focus groups, that they, that you make sure that they actually get included in the publicity, such that they then could show up and be part of the representation. But no, we wouldn't generally do that.
And if the vote is in the affirmative tonight on the motions on the table, would you be supplying to the superintendent and the chairs, the three chairs here tonight? And would you be like a schedule, so we would just, and then they could distribute it to each of the board members, just like, okay, this is the, this is a study group and this is where we are, so we can just keep, not keep tabs, but just, we're just informed? Is that some of the, is that part of the process?
We could. Generally, so, for example, Dudley Charlton is maybe one step ahead of you, right? And so what I'm doing right now is I'm working with the superintendent's executive position to work with the towns and to work with the different schools to set all that up. That's going to take some time, once that's, so that doesn't happen at the same time of, say, signing the contract and that kind of thing. That takes a little bit of time to work out one of the faculty meetings and how do we make sure we're avoiding boards of selectmen and that kind of thing, so for conflict. That is certainly a schedule that then the school committee can be, school committees can be supplied with, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we would want all of you to be sharing when the focus groups were in your communities.
Anyway, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the school committee would receive the focus survey as well?
You could, yes, yes. I generally tell people to be sort of thoughtful about what they, for example, decide to turn up at. It's obviously really tempting to come. If we end up with five of you and it's only 10 people in the room, it can be a little overwhelming. So just, I would never tell you not to come to a posted public meeting, but by the same token, think about, you know, what kind of impact that can have on the conversation.
Any other discussion, questions? Right, so ready for votes? We'll just, all vote together, all those in favor, the motion.
Because it has a money component, does this have to be a roll call? I'm going to ask you.
I don't, I think it's, it's not a, it's not executive session or anything.
No, okay.
All right, so we...
You're welcome.
We'll get started with Paul and I and Susan, well...
And who would you like me to communicate with at this point? I've been talking back and forth with Paul.
Paul, so...
That's fine with me.
Okay, looking to, yeah.
All's in favor.
You get documentation.
For Paul.
And, okay, so we'll be, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll work on the timelines.
Just to reassure Paul, Cheryl's done this twice. Lepre, he's a master at scheduling.
He's reassuring.
And of course, any support you need, just as a point of contact, it's easier just that one person. Okay, so, next we have on the agenda is action on the minutes. We have combined executive session minutes from June 20th, 2018, combined special open meeting minutes, September 26th to 28th, combined executive session meeting, September 26th, 2018, and combined open meeting minutes, September 26th, 2018. So, let me get my papers all set. Do we have any motions?
Can we do them all together? Excellent idea.
I'll move, sorry, on behalf of the union, region, and Southborough, that we accept and release the combined executive session minutes of June 20th, as well as the combined executive session minutes of September 26th, 2018, and that we accept the combined special open meeting minutes of September 26th, and the combined open meeting minutes of September 26th, 2018.
Second for the region.
Second for the union.
Second for Southborough.
Okay.
So move for Northborough.
Second for Northborough.
Okay. All right, so I'm much better prepared this time. So, we have, moved for Northborough by Keith, seconded by Lauren, moved for Southborough, union and region by Paul, seconded for Southborough by Katora, union by Joan, and region by Dan. Do we have any discussion, any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes, yes, okay.
Abstain for me.
Oh, abstain for Jack, okay. So, okay, we have, the next item is the start time study group, and we have Kathleen Potlochko, who's our liaison to the start time study group, and she has something to report for us.
I have something to report. Yes, apparently, I was put in charge of this endeavor at a meeting I was not at.
I'll teach you.
That is lesson I've learned many times over, unfortunately. So at your last combined meeting, I guess you decided to determine if it was feasible, and it was the will of the committee, to, to create a task force. And so the chairs and I sat down and, you know, just based on input from the SSL group and conversations amongst ourselves, came up with the, with a, I think, a very good representation. There was discussion because either, well, first of all, the complexity of our district, right? So we're never going to have a start time group that's six or seven people. We just can't, because we have three districts and two towns. So I think we got it down to 41 members. And, well, because, I know, but...
Hear it out, hear it out.
Yeah, hear the handout.
I do.
Because you've got to have parents, students, administration, and then you've got to have a fair representation from Northborough and from Southborough. And before you know it, you're at 41. So, so anyhow, that's pretty much as far as we got. And then the proposed timeline is probably aggressive, but better to be aggressive than to get to the end of the year and have been snowed out of two meetings and therefore, you know, you don't have anything to report. So the proposed timeline is to, and the overall structure, was to have the advisory working group. And this was based off of a recommendation from another district that's just gone through this. To have an advisory working group that sort of oversees the process, and then the membership of the rest of, what will I assume, will be broken up into kind of like subcommittees of, because there's a lot of input that we have to get from a lot of different contingents. So, so this will obviously be discussed more, but, so the advisory working group would be me as your liaison, the, a representative from Northborough Appropriations, a representative from Southborough Advisory, the school physician, we sort of made him ex officio, because apparently we're going to the till a lot, this school physician. We value his input and, and really, really want it, but also don't want him to feel completely overwhelmed. So I'm sure, given what I've seen, that he will want to be involved, but he's ex officio. The superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the business director. So that's sort of the overarching working group. And then the membership, which is where you get into coming up with 41 real fast, is school committee members, one from Southborough, one from Northborough, one from region. School-based administration, so there will be one from K-5, one from 68, and one from 912. And we will hopefully be able to balance that with grade spans and Northborough and Southborough. Parents in K-5, we figured two per district, is not going to be represented, every school's not going to be represented, but we just, you gotta pare it down somewhere. So with two per district, we think we have a pretty good, we'll have a pretty good, get some tentacles into, especially because you're going to be talking a lot about busing, and there's two tiers of busing in each town. So, and then six to eight, one per district, because we each have one middle school, and then nine to 12, we figured one per grade at the high school. So, and then, again, that'll be balanced out in Northborough and Southborough. And then teachers, hopefully one per school. And then students, two per grade in nine through 12. And boom, you get to 41. But I'm not sure we want to do much less than that, because I think it's very important to have a lot of balance and a lot of input. So, in terms of the proposed timeline, we are hoping that the advisory working group would need to determine the statement of purpose and identify, identify the areas of focus and timeline, so hopefully that'll be done in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. And then solicit participation from each identified member group, that starts November 9th. Or, or the participation meeting, put names next to all of these openings, so that should happen by November 9th. And then do actually, literally, the work. Hopefully gets done by November 30th. And the meetings with subcommittees to review draft data and develop summary documents of findings happens in December. And then in January, we get our presentation, probably January slash February, and then the final report comes in March, and the working group presents to combined school committees, March 20th. And I do believe that's aggressive, but, like I said, I'd rather be aggressive and slip than not be aggressive and really slip. So, anybody have any questions or input?
John.
Is there any language in the teacher contracts that preclude changing the start time? Is there anything that mandates the teachers, that school has to start, that the high school had a certain time?
That would be a delightful thing to find out.
Is that jumping the gun? I'm jumping the gun here. I don't know if...
We thought you were going to tell us the answer.
No, I don't know the answer, that's the point.
And we have three contracts.
Yes.
We actually have nine contracts. But, yeah, so we, they would all have to be carefully delved into.
Okay, sorry. God bless you.
Dan.
So a massive amount of work ahead, countless hours, okay, by at least 41 people. This has been done before, I believe. What are we looking for at the end of the year? Are we looking for 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 22 minutes? I mean, what are we, what is the goal here? What do you think is the ultimate? What do you think is the ultimate output of this? For all the effort that was previously done and is now gonna be done again, for maybe what, that didn't work out before? And I don't wanna put a damper on what you, and trust you're very excited for this, to do this.
Just so excited.
Yeah, but what are we talking about in terms of output for all the effort that's going into this again?
Okay, well, I will tell you, based on, based on my experience of being involved in this since, I think, 2012, is that I don't think that this body or either town has the stomach for expending a lot of effort, a lot of money, for 20 minutes. I don't think that's gonna solve any of the problems that have been identified to us. So I think if we're going to undertake this, that the American Pediatric Association says that the optimal start time is 8:30. So I think that's what we should look for to see if we can do that. And, so that is, in my mind, the ultimate goal, because that's what the recommendation is by the scientific evidence. But, we're also gonna have to take into consideration that, you know, we may not be able to make that happen, in which case, what are our options? I mean, I think literally that's what this whole exercise is gonna be about.
Okay, 'cause I know previously it was, you know, people were scratching for five minutes, you know?
Yeah.
Can we do five minutes? And then, nothing was working. You know, maybe being more bold and saying, all right, 8:30.
Right.
You know, and then, again, I can be, I'm one voice, but I will, you make it 8:30, and you're gonna have plenty of kids who are gonna stay up an hour later, because now we don't have to, you know, be at school till 8:30. So, there's discipline on the kid's side, there's parenting that goes into this as to what time you want your kids to shut off devices, or, you know, close the books, or turn the TV off and go to bed.
Oh, absolutely, the start-school-later group identified 29 areas of interest, things that have to be considered. That is among, that's probably three of them, which you just listed. So, yeah, those, all those have to be, you know, carefully identified and vetted, and put money, I mean, the biggest concern, the biggest constraint, is obviously busing. So, that being said, one of the things that the start-school-later group requested of us was to hire a bus consultant, and so we are going to need to discuss, are we going to expend funds to do that in order to help out this process? So that's something that we should discuss tonight.
Kathleen.
To what degree will the science inform, it's, I'm glad that you've mentioned the American Pediatric suggestion. And even if they stay up later, that's their natural cycle, which is part of this whole biological underpinnings for making the change. But how much curriculum of the materials that are available at this stage of the game are you all going to be reading and looking at, so that everybody's deep into the rationale?
My personal opinion is, I'm not sure anybody's contesting the scientific evidence. I'm not sure that that's where we are. I think that we have heard this for, since literally 2012, and I don't think anybody's contested it. So, so the big question is, is it possible to get there? Based on, if we were a single district, we were K-12, and, you know, in some lucky cases owned our own buses, we'd be in total control and this wouldn't be an issue. We could just do it ourselves. But there are so many complexities with our district, that I think, I think based on our conversations that I've been listening to for six years, that we are all in agreement, that this is something that's the best thing for the students. The question is, how do we make it happen for less than a million dollars? So, that's, and so that's our challenge.
Kathy.
So, can I just throw something else out there? Because I know, I know that there's evidence on every level, but I also believe that every kid's different, and that not every kid stays up late and all that kind of stuff. So, is there, will there ever be an option for the kid that wants to go early? Like, can they, could we ever look at just doing something totally different, schedule-wise? So if somebody does wanna start their day early, to have a day at the end of the day versus having it go, you know, because starting later is gonna take away later for a lot of people. And not every kid, not every person wants that. So is there gonna, will we ever look at something different?
Of course. And I would hope that we would. I would hope that these 41 people are gonna come up with a bevy of ideas, some that have been, you know, tested and tried other places, and also find out the ones that did not work, and why they didn't, and would that be an issue here? I mean, hopefully that will absolutely...
I'm just curious to know.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that would be, especially if it comes out of focus groups, if it comes out of the parents, you know, who, the input from the parents who are on the committee, I would absolutely hope that that was one of the options that was fully...
I know there are also systems that do that as well.
Yeah.
Kathleen.
Back to the, looking at the community at large, it seemed, certainly was Boston's undoing, because the community wasn't vetted. And even if the 41 of you are all on board and understand the absolute dire importance of it all, what do you expect is the pushback from the community of it all?
So, thinking about that, because we, in this room, are probably more educated about all of the issues than anybody. And we all know that it is a really tough job to inform the community, especially when you're making a monetary decision, especially if that monetary decision is actually costing money. So, I think I might, that's, that's when I might suggest that you, you, we, the committee, enlist the resources of the start-school-later group, and that is how you get the word out to the committee. I mean, we can, we have had, not countless, we can count them, but we have had multiple presentations by sleep experts, by, I mean, regarding sleep, regarding homework, regarding stress, you know, we as a district, for years, have tried to educate the community. And I guess we will find out if our efforts are gonna come to fruition. But, but I would say that I would hope that the start-school-later group would help in terms of, you know, getting the word out, whatever the final, the final recommendation is.
Kelly.
So you said by November 9th, you'd hopefully be identifying the group members. How are you going about to advertise to get 41 people? I know specifically somebody that would be, she teaches in the school district that did change start-time, and so she's looked at a wealth of knowledge, for example, and goods and bads of things.
So with, so with each of the constituents, it's sort of different. So, I would say that I could speak for the school committee members. We're gonna decide right here, right now. Whoever wants to raise their hand, and if there's multiple people, then we're gonna duke it out. Parents is typically, how do you typically solicit parent?
So I think for the parents, we have the benefit of the backpack, the weekly backpack, and also, we have the PTOs, the APTOs and the SOS, and we're hoping to outreach to them. We actually have a PTO, SOS, and APTO meeting coming up. We had sent out a doodle poll to catch up on our customary month-to-month meeting. But I think having this go out in the backpack is an opportunity, and also a one-call from the district for membership. With respect to the teachers, we can send that out through the teachers' associations, because we do hope that there is association representation on this, because it's essential to have them involved in the beginning, because it does impact contracts. And next year's a contract negotiation year, so we wanna be mindful of timing as well. And then for students, this is a high school initiative. We're looking at students from each grade, so to have Sarah and the high school administration solicit some membership, perhaps the student council, just to put that out as an opening. So all of that can go out basically within the same two days.
So I'm noticing that, because I just, I wanna be that, the person that I'm thinking of, she's actually, her kids aren't in school, they are like pre-k. And are there any community, because I know somebody else was talking about impacting the community and stuff. I know 41's a lot, but...
Well, where do you stop, right? When you start talking about community members, so...
There is an impact, for example, the school district that I'm thinking of had a huge impact, which they didn't realize, on traffic, community, transportation, you know, you're now having kids that used to be in school for an hour, and now they're competing with people in rush hour, for example. So, there is some sort of community element, and I'm just wondering if there should be a few community representatives, whether or not they, if you put it out, you know, looking for two community representatives, whether or not they come or not, I don't know. I'm just...
DPW?
Well, see, it's just DPW, extended day, I mean, the list gets long very fast. And these are all people and groups that, trust me, should absolutely have input. So I think what we were thinking to sort of contain this is that these subgroups that start doing the work, reach out to those people. And the parents can reach out to other parents, even if they're not a parent, even if they're pre-k, that's fine. So, so there should be ways that all of these contingents get heard, because they all should be heard, but we can't put everyone on this committee.
So basically, what you're envisioning is that the overall working group would perhaps identify certain issues and challenges, or whatever, and then, the committee membership would make up subcommittees, would then go and research and get the data, however, however they feel is the best way to get the information.
Right.
Kinda do that, and then report back to the working group, and produce a report by having large, we have a large committee, how do you make it manageable? And also, there's a lot of work to be done, so how do you make it not fall on, you know, a smaller group? And so, let's get the benefit of the large group by being able to do a really, well, number one, you get the representation, but also, you get bodies there to help do the work.
Yeah, one of these proposals had a really good breakdown of just what they, what their group decided were the sort of the subgroups that needed reporting back. But of course, now I can't find it. But, so that's sort of the, the idea, is that this, this membership group would then, after we determined, okay, what the real issues are, how can you break them down, who needs to be spoken to, and who, how do we get input about overcoming obstacles? And then, you know, everybody presents their, their findings.
Dan.
Did you have something, Ms. Johnson, first, before, okay? So all these meetings are gonna be open to the public, yes? I presume. So the entire community can participate in these. If you're not one of the select 41, the entire community in both towns can participate. Okay, right?
Well, well, I wanna say yes, but I also wanna make sure that, at some point, 41 people are gonna decide, okay, who wants to work on bus issues, and they're gonna do that.
No, no, but their actual meetings are open to the public.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
So, so, there's all gonna be all sorts of public input opportunities, even if someone is not one of the select 41.
Oh, absolutely.
And then, number two, is I think that a lot of the pushback, other, other areas of pushback are gonna be, if this is a zero-dollar option, great. Otherwise, you go to both towns, and you're gonna have lots of people with no kids in the school who are not willing, not looking to pay a dime for something unless they are absolutely convinced that it's, that is money well-spent. You're gonna get those, another group of people who are gonna say, "We got up for decades, and it seemed to work out okay for us." You're gonna have another group who says, "So, Ms. Johnson, where, what, where are we at? Where's this district in relation to all the other districts in the Commonwealth? We're rated pretty high."
Usually in the top 20%.
And they're gonna say, "Okay, so if I spend a million dollars, we're gonna what? Go from, you know, this number, you know, from the top, to, what are we, what are we, what are we looking for?" So you're gonna, you're gonna have all sorts of constituencies that are gonna have to be addressed, you know, if this thing is gonna be successful at the end of the day.
Absolutely, and hopefully by having the members from Northborough Appropriations and Southborough Advisory, that hopefully those people have the pulse on those kinds of issues in town meeting, how town meeting tends to vote. Because I think we all know that if the average town meeting member sits there, and they often just do what the selectmen and the advisory or appropriations says to do. Like, they don't, they, if, so if we don't have appropriations and advisory in our, you know, on board with this, I don't see how it passes town meeting. So we really need to make sure that, you know, we use that as a first line of defense, you know, before we even get to town meeting. If we can't get it past those two folks, then, you know, we don't, we don't wanna spend any energy for something that's gonna fail.
Kathleen.
I think that's why I'm talking about the educational piece, the science, because of the tremendous cost it is, and even, you know, that's always been the way physicians were, "Well, I did my residency this way, and you're gonna have to tough it out." But they now understand that the sleep deprivation causes so many errors, and they've got it down to how many hours that people are there, that they're looking to transition those types of cycles in their training. And Harvard is no longer allowing or working toward not allowing things to happen after 10:00 PM on campus, because they see that their students are suffering so much. The mental illness, the depression, the anxiety is just unbelievably rampant. So, the sleep deprivation increases your risk for cancer, Alzheimer's, and type 2 diabetes.
I'll refrain from my, yeah.
All right, let's have to be...
As a citizen and a soldier, I get up very early, and I stay up very late, and maybe I'm demented in a number of ways. I have worked out okay, but, Jack, you can, you've seen me in a soldier.
Well, and to amplify Kathleen's point, in terms of winning hearts and minds for the general public, on the science side, are any of the presentations that the sleep group did, are they, are they videotaped? Can we put them on websites? Can we put them on either district? I mean, I don't know if it's a private, and we have the license to do so, but if we could start, here's part of the study group, and if you are interested in start times, watch this video.
Well, I watched them all, are they still there?
Yeah, they've been on the website. There's a link, there has been for a number of years. But there's also Dr. Judith Owens' presentation that she did as part of the speaker series. The entire speaker series is online, which also addresses the use of technology, which, you know, when you start talking about sleep deprivation, oftentimes, technology and the use of technology comes up as well. And, so all of that information is still available, as well as a link, I think, to the start time later, which has a whole myriad of presentations. So that's available on the district site. We've repopulated it from year to year, every time we've had a conversation about reexamining this topic, which is, you know, something that's important to continue to explore, and that information is there. And as we gather more data, we've continued to enrich that website. So that's on the district site with its own link. But I would like to circle back to the discussion about the transportation consultant. And while I'm not an advocate for spending money, if money does not need to be spent, in this situation, much of what we are talking about tonight has been explored. The topics have been explored, the 8:30 start time and the implications on the K-8s, and whether that could feasibly be happening without additional buses, or how late would the young ones be, you know, coming home from school if that were the case, because that tends to be a K-5 conversation. So having that information readily available for parents to consume and digest is essential. And so, we've talked about this in the past, but one of the reasons I feel that we continue to revisit this is obviously because it's an essential conversation, but also because we have not had that sort of neutral lens, or that is the perspective of some folks, that we haven't had someone from the outside examine our bus routes. They will have the same conversations with our bus company as we have had over the years, but, you know, we are very close to the topic, and sometimes being close to the topic doesn't always allow for, you know, an innovative perspective. We looked very much at Masconomet, we looked at Dover Sherbin's report, and we looked at Acton Boxborough's report. And in each of the two, I think, of the three cases, did hire an outside transportation consultant. And they are, there are a number of them. But they look at things, perhaps, that's what they do best, right? They analyze traffic patterns, and we can't possibly access all that data. A lot of the information that we're gonna need is readily already reported. There's an entire five pages of school districts that have looked at start time, that have considered start time and adopted start time, they've looked at various schedules, They've looked at various schedules, as have we. So a lot of this is familiar conversation, but what we have not done before is agree to expend, you know, up to a certain amount, divided forty, thirty, and thirty, to have a consultant come in and reexamine our routes. And I think until we go there, that credible, you know, research that perhaps an outside consultant could bring, that we, who are close to the issue and have flipped the schedule more times than, you know, an acrobat in a circus, I think is, is valuable time spent, because we will come back and visit this topic again, I think, without that next step. There are, there is some additional funding available. There's never additional funding, but, let me rephrase that, there's never additional funding. But, in a budget line item, if I were to look at a budget line item, in our transportation line item, because we figured a gas escalator last year, in the, going into the fourth year of the contract, there's a slight amount of money there that we could potentially access, which I'm not, at this point in time, seeing it being allocated for an expenditure, you know, a transportation expenditure. It would have just balanced out to the bottom line, but I think that might be a place we could look for funding, if we wanted to pursue that option. What does a consultant cost? Depends which consultant you hire. This topic has come up at the ASABET Collaborative on the Board of Directors many, many times, and as well has, what are we going to do about the fact that only one bus company bids on a geographic locale bus company, uh, bus bids? And there are three of us that are coming up about the same time, and we all, right now, have the same bus company, because we only had one bus bid. So we've, I've asked the ASABET Collaborative, along with the Marlboro Superintendent, to explore sharing a transportation consultant, which would be a savings, a cost savings for our district and their district going forward, to help with scheduling. But I also asked if they had a consultant. They've just recently hired someone who has done this kind of thing, analysis in the past, and Masconomet has a reference, as does Masbo, and there is another reference. So I would suggest we go out for an RFP for this, and agree not to expend over a certain amount, so we can get this moving. And we could pretty much put that out there and see what we got.
So basically, we have, for action items, to probably vote to establish this tax for, task force in this general configuration that we've talked about. Vote on members, or people, member, you know, members from each representative from each committee. And the third thing is to motion and vote on the bus consultant.
I mean, technically, I, we don't need a vote, but I think it's a great step for the, for the committee to take a position to vote and say, yes, we're going to go to that next step, and hire a transportation consultant. I think that's a, you know, that's a positive message that the committee is sharing with the community, because this topic comes up, as we know, from year to year. So I think that's a message that the committee is sending. While a vote isn't necessarily required, because it's within the appropriated budget, I think it's a good position for the committee to take, and to send a message that, yes, we're going this extra step to really investigate this topic.
For transportation, would they potentially help with, like, bus routing and things like that, too, or would that be like a different topic?
Yeah, so there's really two, it's a great question. We're looking at this from two perspectives. One is a transportation consultant purely to look at our bus routes now, and see if it's possible to do an eight-thirty start at the high school without adding additional buses, or affecting ridership in any way. Longer term, going forward to next year, as our routine course of business, that transportation consultant will serve more as a scheduler of our buses, and to deal with the myriad of issues that not only we faced. Someone sent me the Sudbury Superintendent's one call last week, and said, "I thought you'd be interested in this," and I, except for Sudbury changed names with Northborough, Southborough, it was basically the same one call about the issues that they're having with, with buses. So to have someone whose expertise lies in those kinds of issues, I think, would be very important for this district, as is, would be Hudson and Marlboro, the three of us are hoping to partner. We don't need a full-time transportation consultant, but we do need that expertise from time to time with the route. So, it's kind of two topics, but it's still all about busing, and all about routing and transportation.
Are you ready to take motions to accept?
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
So just because I'm new to this, and, and I don't know exactly what's happened in the past, the, so will the, are we, it seems like the bus consultants that we've worked with in the past were only looking at no-cost options. Is that correct, or no?
The bus company in the past is looking at all options. We've really, and there was no consultant. We were working with the bus company to develop routes that worked. And worked could be defined by no-cost options, no new additional buses added on, which could or couldn't be a cost, because we could have added perhaps a fourth tier or a fifth tier, so we were looking at fourth and fifth-tier adds. And just so you know, the way the charge of a bus works, is if I'm a driver, and I never leave that bus, I'm like Charlie on the MBTA, I never get off, until I've completed my routes, there's a certain cost. So when you add additional tiers, and the driver never changes, at the regional, school district level, because we have regional transportation, that's why we are able to have reduced costs for the buses in Northborough or Southborough, K-8s, because they're like half-price. The driver never gets off the bus. As soon as the driver, that driver is done his route, and we have another bus that starts, let's say, that bus is full cost. So that's where the cost differential comes in. So we looked at, can we just add another tier, which might be a minimal cost, and get our kids back home at a certain hour, you know, before eight at night, or get them out at a reasonable order, hour in the morning. So we did all kinds of configurations, just to see what was possible. So, yes, preferably no cost. The next was another tier, using, utilizing the same buses at minimal cost, and then just looking at a variety of times. So I think we came up with, and this was on our website for quite some time, but some of this now is, you know, old, five years old. I think we had probably, at one point, ten different variations of scheduling. So they would look at that...
So in order to just start high school later, that's...
Everything, every combination. Middle school first, middle school in the middle, middle school, you know, after high school. So we tried to flip our routes as much as we can, within the construct that we have now, without either, you know, adding too many different tiers, or adding a different route. But we're not experts at bus, bus consultant.
Right, so this was, this was our, we were doing this?
With the bus company.
Okay, so then, the difference would be, we'd be hiring somebody from the outside to totally take a new look at this?
Absolutely.
Okay, got it.
Clean slate, clean view, with sort of no, make this work.
Yeah.
Okay. So before we motion to accept this draft, are you looking for volunteers? Because I would be happy to volunteer for the Northborough position, or are you looking to appoint people? Is that going to be part of our process tonight? I guess Kathleen ended up...
I think it should be. I would love to have that decided by tonight.
Yes, that was one of the...
I second Lauren.
Okay, so, why don't we move to accept this format, and then we can seek volunteers for the, the committee, from the committee member, and then our, you know, and also vote for, as a show of support on authorizing spending, yes.
I was going to do that as one motion, if that's appropriate, but to move to support, to approve the, the task force as presented by Kathleen, and as one of their initial orders of business, to identify a busing consultant that could assist them in their efforts.
Okay, so that's move for the region?
Second for the region.
Okay, um, do we have Northborough, Southborough, and Union?
I'll make the same motion for Northborough and Union.
Sure. Second for Northborough.
Who, who's that second? Lauren? Okay.
Second for the Union.
Okay, all right, and then Southborough?
I'll move for Southborough.
All right, and a second?
I'll second for Southborough.
Okay, Jen. Okay, so, we have Joan moving for Northborough, seconded by Lauren. Katora moving for Southborough, seconded by Jen. Joan moving for Union, seconded by Paul. And Dan moving for Region, and seconded by Joan. All those in favor? Okay, so now we need to get the composition of, for Northborough, Southborough, and Region. So Lauren volunteered for Northborough.
I volunteer for Southborough.
Okay, Jen for Southborough, and a Region volunteer, because Kathleen is a working group person, so we need an additional Region volunteer.
I nominate Kathleen Howland.
Well, I was asking, a lot of the deadlines look like they're on Fridays, but are those just deadlines, or meeting times?
No, those are just, yeah, those are just...
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Okay, are the meetings in the day that you're aware of?
We have not scheduled one single meeting yet.
Okay.
So if, I, and I assume that the, I mean, you'd like the, to get maximum participation, so I'm guessing we'd probably doodle poll, especially the initial meetings, where we might all be meeting together.
I have a very tight teaching schedule, so that, I just want to make sure that if I come on to this, that I can actually participate in the meetings. I am, am I anticipating evening meetings?
I think it's what the doodle...
It's going to be, it's, yeah, it's going to be...
Forty-one people, I gotta believe.
I gotta believe, yeah. So is your teaching schedule tight in the evenings?
It's my kid's schedule. That's where it gets tight.
But we all, yeah, we all have that problem, so, yeah. So then it'll just be doodle-pollable.
Okay.
I don't imagine there'll be that many meetings once we get our mission intact.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
You know, particularly if it's purposeful groups that are doing specific research, then I think that group just goes off and...
Like, yeah, I mean, I would even think, like, the subcommittees would, even within the subcommittee, someone would be charged to looking into this and that, and it could almost work. I mean, depending on how the subcommittees want to work, I mean, it could, I could foresee that people could go off and do their task, like, on their own time, and then with, with meetings back to the committee as a whole, or even if you couldn't attend, you could send what you found.
And with a smaller group, I would imagine it would be easier to...
Schedule.
Schedule a meeting that everybody could...
Let's do the hang, Kathleen.
Quality hang.
Quality hang.
All right.
For a good cause.
So we have, we have our representatives from Northborough, Lauren from Southborough, Jen, and Region Kathleen Howland.
I just have one comment. I'd like to thank whoever put this together. I want to say Kathleen, but maybe it's with...
It was all of us.
Oh, I think this is really great. This is one of, even with the timeline, it's an aggressive one, and we know how things can change with snowstorms, but your presentation of this was very concise, and one of the best, and I applaud you, and maybe we can use this as a model for some of the other task force that we have. It's really good. I applaud you. Thank you very much.
We'll be, we'll see if we can be as concise when we present the findings.
Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, we have discussion of superintendent's goals. As you know, this is our superintendent's last year of working on goals. Superintendent Johnson will be retiring June thirtieth, and I think this is our first public announcement of, of that, as a, as a group. So this is her last set of goals, and sadly, and...
And I think we just filled it up with the stack, the task, task force. But this information was distributed at the last meeting. I can certainly redistribute it, and these goals were created prior to the announcement, because it was shared at combined meeting, that I would be retiring, and I would like to thank communities of Northborough and Southborough for their support, not just over the last eight years, as I moved from central office, but in the thirteen years prior, in my role as teacher and department chair and assistant principal here at Albuck, when it's been a privilege to serve the district, the districts of Northborough, Southborough, and the regional school district. But there's a time for everything, and my time to retire and spend time with family is near, and I'm very excited about that. But also appreciate that there's a lot of great work that needs to be done between now and June. The goals that you have in front of you, I think, are quite likely to be realized this year, despite the fact that we will be transitioning in a new superintendent. Depending on who that might be, the spring will be filled with hiring for some other positions as well, because oftentimes, when an internal, if that is the case, moves up, there's some sort of movement within the district, and if it's not, there's still some hiring that needs to be done as well. And I also appreciate the importance of making sure there's a smooth and effective transition for the new superintendent coming in. There have been a number of things that have been added to the goal list by others since my announcement, one by both Chief Polis and Chief Liger. As I mentioned last year, the, we were in the throes of creating a new memorandum of understanding, which hadn't been authorized since the nineties, and Governor Baker came out with some new language. So the chief has requested that this, we try to accomplish this before we leave. Each town has some specific nuances, as Mrs. Frank pointed out earlier, that are unique to each district, and there are some things that we would like to bring some closure to. So, it's about bringing closure to some things that are doable. I also recognize that not everything that is on the table will be closed, that will come to fruition by the end of the year, because it takes time. So there's some good work yet to be done. So these are in addition to the reality that in seven months, we want to make sure we have people in place, that it's a smooth transition. We have three budgets to pass, and, you know, a lot of good work to do on some significant projects. I can think of several in Southborough. We have some security upgrades that need to be still completed, so there's a lot of good work to be done. But these are identified goals that I think will help the district and assist in the overall organization moving forward.
I didn't have a copy of that in my packet, and I'm just wanting, perchance, thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah, the combined. And we just added the forty-one...
Person.
Person committee to, for start times, so that will take some, a little bit of time.
Hopefully not much.
Any other, any questions on these?
Do we have any? Or can we ask a question on these?
I can go through each one if you want.
No, that's okay. Well, I may.
(laughing)
Ready to go home, Maya?
I generally do.
Yes, if you'd like to know.
And maybe I should, for the record, I don't, you know, it's up to the committee. If you have a specific question, that's fine. Or I can go through each one.
Good question.
Questions might be good.
Questions.
Yeah.
I had a question, through the chair.
Yeah.
I had a question on the backside, the student improvement ball. You said, it's student improvement ball, but it's implementation at instructional rounds. Can you explain that one?
Sure, anytime you improve instruction, you improve student improvement, student achievement.
But what is instructional rounds?
So instructional rounds has been an initiative in the district for probably two years. Couple years ago, I think I shared with you that we sent a group to Harvard. It was a cohort of administrators, and that was our first foray into instructional rounds, which is really assessing what our instructional practices are in the district, so that we could have in common, like, goals in terms of what is effective instruction. We define what is effective instruction, and how we are teaching to students in the 21st century. It's sort of taking an inventory of what we do well, and how we continue to grow. And the more powerful the teaching and learning, or the instruction, the more powerful the learning. So, if you remember, we were quite proud that we had sent a cohort of administrators, I think ten, to Harvard for a week of instruction. And then likewise, we were equally pleased to learn that Stephanie Reinhorn would provide that excellence of training, if you will, for all of our administrators, those that were not able to go on that week intensive. And I, I remember it being the week that I think it snowed every day. So the folks were pleased to be able to, to commute together into Harvard every day for, for that solid week. for, for that solid week. And it was investment in the district, knowing that this would be a full rollout, um, that this, like Atlas, um, would take a series of someplace, three to five years. And we were fortunate to have Stephanie, um, come in as our training consultant. She's paid on a title to grant, and she has been with us throughout this year. Um, she chose to, um, put her training in Harvard aside as a professor and just adopt our district, because she was so impressed with the work that we were doing. And, um, you know, I, I give a lot of credit to Greg, um, for this, uh, because he has been working very closely in his role as, um, you know, curriculum, um, leader in, in his role as assistant superintendent to, um, introduce this to all of the teachers and, um, and all of the administrators. So the administrators were trained first, um, and the rounds will begin, uh, slated to begin, um, in all of our schools this month. So it's been a lot of great work. It's been a two-year process. Um, it's something we've sort of kept the committees apprised of over the last couple of years, uh, starting with that cohort in December of the winter month. And, um, this, like Atlas, is, is going to launch, uh, this month in our schools. Um, in fact, just today, they did an introduction to the staff, I think, at two of our schools, two of our elementary schools and in Northborough as well. Uh, we've been careful to make sure that the association, um, has been part of this process so that they know that it's not evaluative. It's professional growth for the leadership team. Um, and, um, this will be something that we continue for another couple of years.
So instead of, like, the, um, observations where staff members go in and look at other staff members, is this observations of looking at student learning?
So, yeah, we're trying to stay away from the terms observation and evaluation, because all too often teachers then equate those two, observation and in fact, but it's a series of rounds that are purposely, um, visiting our classrooms. And together, they will then come back and process through what they've observed, um, what the student behaviors have been, what do they feel that the student learning outcomes have been from that experience? There are no staff names associated with this, so it's not a threatening experience for our teachers. Um, and we're starting with, um, different cohorts of administrators from all three districts together, visiting classrooms. And so this will take place for some time. My department chairs at the high school are involved as well. Um, and there's been, uh, a lot of introduction, a lot of explanation, a lot of education about what rounds is and what rounds, um, what rounds are and what rounds are not. And that, um, you know, working with the associations, uh, we have their support because they appreciate that it's not an evaluative piece. Yeah, and so it is what's good teaching and therefore then what's good learning in our classes. And it's a scary thing, uh, in our district, because our culture doesn't support sort of visitation from others. You know, I can speak of, um, as a teacher, uh, I remember an administrator coming in to, to observe. Um, and so to participate from a observation standpoint. And so this is a group of five who may spend ten minutes in a class, five minutes in a class, and then move on to another class. And so they're not looking for that purposeful experience in the class. They're looking for commonality between, uh, you know, with the experiences of visiting different classes in the course of a day.
So is this like, um, uh, what I'm familiar with is literacy coaching. And when you do literacy coaching with another one, there's a level of confidentiality that you have between. Is there confidentiality between the mentors that, not the mentors, or that group that's going in? Is there confidentiality between, not, you know, what they report back? That type of thing?
So the reporting back to teachers, there's no reporting back to teachers at this point. It's just observing the craft and taking back their experiences as, as folks who are participants on the rounds and sharing what is it that they've observed? Um, from a holistic standpoint, so there's no names, there's no teacher names. Um, and there's a process. I think the committee wait, might, um, enjoy an overall presentation on instructional rounds. We've, we've had this conversation for a couple of years, but to really experience, um, a little bit of a snapshot of how it differs from evaluation and observation and the, and the purposeful outcomes. I think, um, having Stephanie maybe join us and do a presentation would be great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And to do that at combined, because it is in all three districts.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Lauren?
Um, your last district goal about the interest-based bargaining, training, um, is that a goal that you've set before? Or is this a, a new goal, sort of, as you leave? You're giving us your wisdom on this matter.
So, um, we, I don't know how much wisdom is left, but, um, I can give you some information. We did not use interest-based bargaining, uh, the last time we negotiated, and the committee, the associations really suggested that it would be nice if we could, if we did not do that again. However, there will be a new superintendent, and there are new school committee members who have not gone through negotiation. And so the purpose of interest-based bargaining and to do that this year is to really, um, it would be a goal to have our new, uh, configuration of school committee members, if you will, and there'll be some new ones in May, after the election, um, to be trained on that and what it is and what it is not. Again, uh, it's a different approach to negotiating, um, but it has been six years. So we did not do it the last, this last time. Next year will be six years since we've gone through interest-based bargaining. Uh, the individual that has always trained the district has retired. Uh, Lois Mason, who, um, was our MTA association partner, has retired as well, but she is doing interest-based bargaining. She is well-respected by our associations. Um, and we've had conversa- I've had conversations with, um, the presidents, the association presidents, we meet once a month. And they two are a little excited about the notion of having pre-training. Uh, conversations will start very soon into next year, um, about, um, negotiate, the process. And there'll be some ongoing dialogue early on in the year if, if you are to have approved contracts by the end of, um, next year. So to have those rich experiences now is an investment in the future of negotiations for next year, as well as, you know, bringing some good educational experiences for people who've never gone through negotiations.
Thank you, I appreciate having that training.
I'm actually, uh, hopefully, I'm going to get, uh, confirm some dates. I'm actually meeting with her on Saturday. And, um, if there's a particular month that the committee wants us to stay away from, um, I can't predict snow nights or sto- snow, snowstorms, but, um, you know, getting this done probably in, um, a March timeframe. So there's a lot of things happening, including the search, in, in a very short period of time. Yeah, I know, um, when I've gone to the training in the past, it's, it's very beneficial. I mean, it's beneficial, I, I've been looking forward to it myself, and I've done it before. So it's always, it's always good to, it's always a good thing to get refreshed on. I don't think she has the same elephant that she throws in the middle of the table. I said, "Do you have the elephant in the room with the table?" She said, "I'm not going to do that." So I don't know what she's going to throw in the middle of the table if you are so inclined to share your thoughts or there's a little discord, but, uh, something will be there, so.
Is this, is this like a, a one-night thing, or is it a, a series?
Well, it can be done in a couple of ways. Um, it's the will of the committees. Um, ordinarily, it's been, you know, a full Saturday, but it's at least eight hours of training. Um, she can, you know, introduce this in two chunks, um, or a full day. She has a particular thought about which, which is better, but I think it's up to the committees and to determine when they're available. It's usually done on a Saturday. Um, but I'm sure, you know, she would consider four hours in the day or starting in the afternoon as well, so I think she'll make herself available. She just trained Framingham and a couple other neighboring districts, so she, you know, it's, she's well-respected in this area. In the, in the past, I know, all the one I went, it was the school committee member and, and the association teaching members as well. So everyone would be there together. Yeah, everybody would be there together, as well as, uh, the last time we did IBP, six years ago, we did have a representative from the town as well. Mm-hmm. Yes, I think that's the one I went to, and it, we had the town, um, members. Just because, yeah, so they would understand what's this interest-based bargaining, because everyone's more familiar with more traditional bargaining and that kind of thing, so. And we had lunch, too. We had lunch, yeah. But it is, it is kind of a lo- like, a longer snip, you know? It, it lends itself to a longer chunk of time together and, you know, kind of get it all absorbed and-
I, I've been through it twice here, and both times it was on Saturday. It's really kind of the, the only option.
Dan?
Love to, uh, make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals as presented.
Motion by Dan for the region.
Second for the region.
I motion this name for Northborough.
Okay. Lauren, motion for Northborough.
Motion for Southborough and the Union.
I'll second for the Union and Northborough.
I'll second for Southborough.
Okay. So we have, um, Lauren motioning for Northborough, seconded by Joan. Um, Paul, seconded, uh, motioning for Southborough, seconded by Katora. Paul motioning for the Union, seconded by Joan. Right? He's second, and, um, Dan motioning by the Region, seconded by Joan. All those in favor? Okay. Two other, next schedule, did I skip over some? Yeah, there are two other items in your packet. One is the policy. We did meet for Regional. Northborough already reviewed this, uh, social media and acceptable use policy. Northborough already, um, met and reviewed this, and Regional met the other night. This was in a, um, an effort, an all-in effort by all three subcommittee, uh, policy meet, subcommittees, to sort of bring this to combine tonight. We certainly do not have to look at it this evening. It will be back in December. Uh, this supports all of our expansion into Canvas and to bring your own device. It has been some time since this policy has been revised. And we have never had a staff social, um, social media policy. We are working in close, uh, concert with the associations. They helped us craft this document, and it's all about what the expectations of the districts, uh, are for teachers' use on social media. It's a very powerful policy, which has been needed for some time. Um, the association is bringing in the MTA attorney to talk to them about being ever mindful and cautious about what you, as an employee of the district and a teacher, post on social media. So it's a real, uh, great collaboration with them. We will be asking to consider this for adoption, either at the December meeting or again, if we meet in January, because we'd like to get this policy in place. So this will be a first, first reading for all committees? We actually had a first read in all subcommittees. Okay. Um, Southborough looked at it and wanted to bring it forward a little bit. This is subcommittee has, has read these. So getting this in front of you this evening will, will allow us actually to bring it to each, uh, December or November meeting, as we've done in the past, of Southborough, Northborough and Region. So when we come together, it combined again in December, each of the school committees will have read it as a first read. Mm-hmm. That's a mouthful, but that's, uh, process. And one other thing, I know, Dan, I, I just, it's going to, I'm going to bring it home with this one. This is a good one.
Bring it home.
Bring it home. We need a, uh, is there a delegate from Region for the MASC? Is anyone, uh, going to be, a motion for a voting delegate for the Region at the conference?
I had registered, but I'm not going to be able to attend, unfortunately. My schedule changed.
Okay.
What's are the dates?
Uh, November sixth, seventh and eighth. When is, uh?
Voting is usually that Wednesday, I think is usually-
Yes, the eighth.
Really? That's the voting?
I think it's the eighth.
It changed a couple of years ago.
Or the ninth.
They really want you there Friday afternoon, huh?
The ninth, thank you.
It was for the school committee members that have other jobs and don't necessarily attend the conference.
Fair enough.
And so Friday at three fifteen was, they were hoping to get more of a, that's, that's what I was told.
Cross-section, probably.
Actually, if it's Friday at three fifteen?
Yeah.
We don't need to have a-
I can, I can actually make that. I can make that.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So, um, that's our, any other business to come before the committee? Those two items?
That's it.
Um, and so the next scheduled, uh, combined date is on Wednesday, December nineteenth. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
So I'll do, for Dan?
Second for the Region.
Second for the Region, by Joan?
I'll make the motion for Northborough and Union.
Okay, Joan makes for Northborough and Union.
Second for Northborough.
Who, who's that?
Lauren.
Lauren? Okay.
I'll second for Union.
Paul seconds for Union, we need Southborough.
I'll move for Southborough.
And Katora moves for Southborough. And second.
I'll second.
Second. All right, so, see if I have this right. Um, moved by Joan, um, for Northborough and Union. Um, moved by Southborough, oh. Was that, yeah. Moved by, yes, I know, it says Northborough and Union.
Sorry, you got it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, moved by Katora for Southborough and moved by Dan for Region. And the second, the seconding for Northborough is Lauren. Seconding for, uh, Southborough is, um, who did I, the second?
Paul.
Paul, right, 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 right. Um, and Union, seconded by Paul, and Region, seconded by Joan. All those in favor? Adjourned.